Okay, good morning. It is nine o'clock on February the ninth, 2015, and I call the Potter County Commission School to order. Today we have Bo Williams from Trinity Health Shield. It's going to be in the commissions. I know we'll see him.
Lord, I thank you for these men and women that serve you and serve our city and give themselves and their time to do so. And, Lord, we ask for wisdom from above today for everything, Lord, that they consider that affects our city, the decisions they make, that all the deliberations. We just pray that their minds and hearts would be filled with wisdom and would come into agreement with your mind and heart, Lord, for our city. And, Lord, I just, I thank you again for them, and your word says that the generous soul shall be watered himself, and I pray blessings over each and every one of them, over their families, over their businesses and careers, and, Lord, for all that they do, may the richness of your blessings water their lives, their souls in individual, personal, wonderful ways. I thank you for it, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, including the United States of America, one nation, one government, indivisible, the liberty of the justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state of America, one and indivisible.
Okay, first item is approval of minutes from the January twenty-sixth, twenty-fifteenth Potter County Commission to order.
Make the motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number two, vouchers to consider enacted upon the payment of vouchers processed by county office office for the period of January twenty-one, twenty-fifteen through February of February twenty-fifteen. Check numbers one six zero three five three through one six zero five eight two and wire transfers number four nine seven through five oh three in the amount of two million four hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and five dollars and eighteen cents.
I move we, the Commissioners' Court approve the vouchers as presented.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand. Interest report, do you recognize interest funding, Lord? Okay, is there anything special you want to talk about?
No.
Thank you. So, recognize. Number four, tax office, to consider an act upon refunds for overpayment of taxes. Good morning. Saw your grave sitting in the bakery yesterday. So, is there anything special about any of these, just the usual stuff? Do you have any questions?
Sure, I do have one question, one of the ones, I think this might have been left this morning, to be refunded to Phillips. It's a fairly higher dollar amount. Can you help explain that?
Basically, two checks. One check was for that account, and the other check included another account, and we didn't catch it before the checks went to the bank, or we could have sent one of those checks back.
About a truck.
Or a house. One hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
It amazes me, these people that think they know what their tax costs are. What was due?
So, we have three to refund. I move that we approve the refund of overpayment of taxes to Swisher IV for fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-fourty-eight, Aaron King for seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight oh seven, at the Phillips Sixty-Six Company for a hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-six twenty-seven.
There are two more, Commissioners?
Are there two more?
Let me make sure it's not too much. You don't have to get half of this. I have a second.
We have three.
Can we? Yes, there's three, but that one doesn't go to Aaron King, it goes to Phillips.
Owner's name of taxes paid by, excuse me.
Okay, then we move to the second, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Number five, county clerk to recognize completion under require twenty hours of continuing education for twenty-fourteen as prescribed in section fifty-one, zero, point, zero, I'm sorry, can you start over? Section fifty-one, point, six zero five, the Texas Government Code. How was school?
Good.
I'm going to skip down to number eight. We'll do Center City real fast, Beth, just so you can, I know you have the meeting. This is to consider an act upon allowing Center City to use courthouse water on the square starting June third through July twenty-ninth. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm here once again to ask permission to play in your beautiful front yard. We have our twenty-first season of Center City's hunting on the square coming up, and, you know, we were so fortunate, even through construction and all the work here at the, at the courthouse, we stayed here, and it's become such a tradition. Since construction has completed and everything looks so beautiful, our crowd has grown to more than six hundred people each week, and it's something that the community truly looks forward to. We're going to keep our lunch price again at seven dollars. We want to make it accessible for everyone, and, of course, a lot of people, especially our seniors and the larger groups, they'll kind of bring their own picnic and just enjoy the music and the beautiful courthouse lawn. It really fits our mission of bringing people downtown, slowing down their day enough so they can see the beautiful historic buildings that we have, and we take it as a real privilege that you let us use your lawn, and we really respect it, and we love, love working with you, and we love working with my kids team, because it really, it takes all of us to feed six hundred people in thirty-five minutes.
Beth, you all make it pretty easy for us to be able to continue this, because you really do respect the property. It's cleaned up, and it, it almost looks, looks better than when it was before you used it.
I appreciate that. We cannot do it without the partnerships, you know, the Clements Unit with Ward and Barry Martin. They send us a team to help set up and take down, and it's a new partnership that really proves that the community works together.
Continue. I move we approve the use of our courthouse lawn for the hunting on the square.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Beth, just come see me sometime and angle and get the papers.
I will. Thank you so much, James. Thank you.
Okay, number six, is John Keel here today? Okay, interlocal agreement, PRPC and Potter County, to consider an act upon interlocal cooperation agreement between Manhattan Regional Bank Commission and Potter County for the use of electronic warrant transaction program, also known as PUES.
It just got named just three months ago, but actually, it's a hand-held warrant system. It sounds a little bit churchy, but it's primarily a method of law enforcement. Anyway, it's a system that's not new to the county. Y'all have been using it for the past year. In fact, the program was given birth by the Emerald Police Department, and the city of Emerald asked us to take this program over, because they saw the potential for extending the benefits of this program well beyond just the Potter and Randall County area. Essentially, what it allows for is the expedient processing of warrants. Back in two thousand, the E-Signature Act was passed during the administration that basically made electronic signatures as legitimate, with a standard of signatures on paper. So that now, if an officer needs to get a warrant, get a warrant quickly, they can basically use email, send that to the judge, pull up the tablet off the system that's now supporting that e-warrant system, fill out the appropriate fields on the warrant request, send that on to the judge, the judge can then review the document, they'll call the officer back and say, you squared the test to the, to the information you just provided me. If so, then the off, the judge can sign electronically, sign the document, and send it back to the officer, who happens to be scanned by the person or the house or whatever they, they happen to get the warrant for. It's not only saves time, but it saves cost as well, too. The traditional method is put somebody in a vehicle, run over and see if you can beat the judge, find the judge, get their signature, and then give him. The, the way that the envelope is set up is that there's an activation fee at the start of the contract period of two hundred and fifty dollars, and then after that, it's a per envelope, we call it envelope, but it's a little, basically electronic transaction charge that's set on a, on a scale where the more envelopes you use, the less, but the lower the cost of your envelopes. And, I don't know, Sheriff, you guys have told me that you anticipate using, or at least I heard, that you're going to be using probably a hundred envelopes in the coming year. Have you found that system to be handy for, for your purposes? Yes, sir. So, that's, that's pretty much it, unless there are any questions that you want to add.
So, an envelope is a warrant, is that right? If one warrant equals an envelope.
There's, if two envelopes equals one. When I send that, they send it over to the judge, I'm assuming one envelope, and you send it back to me, another envelope.
So, we already had this place, which is renewed?
Yeah, we're redoing it. I mean, the, the previous agreement was somewhat informal between ADD and any other law enforcement agencies in the region, or in the area, but now, as we look to extend this program out to other areas we can handle, we're formalizing the understandings of which that's going to be.
Carrie, you do have a question for the funds that are budgeted for the envelopes? Where do those currently fall?
I don't know, but we're banking for anything on it right now.
We haven't paid any.
So, the transaction fee is two dollars and fifty cents when you're under the five-hundred threshold of following this agreement correctly. So, it's a fairly nominal amount, but I just want to make sure, I'm assuming it's not slotted for budget currently. Sheriff, do you any indication of where that might come in the budget? Should we know that before we sign an agreement?
I'm sure that there are funds, we just need to discuss. It's out of the station, it's possible.
Okay. And then, John, the other question that I had was the technical requirements, is there anything that we need to be prepping for? And I'll look to Jason here as well. We need to be prepping for?
No, I mean, he can take the officer pool, help on the MDT's, that can type in the appropriate fields, email it off the judge, and then it's returned. Technically, you can even do it on a smartphone or some smart device, but I've tried that. Trying to type this way is all but possible.
What, what systems do you use it on today, Sheriff? What pieces of equipment? Is it their laptop?
We've been using this rubber a year.
Okay.
We've done, I think we averaged like, I think we used twenty envelopes last year or something. We're not using a tremendous amount, but it does help in trying to locate the judge and get them to the judge's, to the city's attorney. You don't have to call around and then drive to their house or wherever they're at.
Okay. So, you haven't paid anything for it? No one has billed you?
When the police department started it, they took the expense of it.
Okay.
So, they, they just kind of grabbed on it, just all in, and let us use it.
It's two fifty, it's two fifty, correct, so I think we can afford twenty-four dollars and I'll pay it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you consider.
He said we got in the chat that we can afford.
Sure, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, especially if it's a, a new fiscal agreement. I mean, it sounds like logistically it's been happening, but just so that we're aware of that.
Is this what you're all going to sign today, or is there another one coming?
Oh, that, that's it. I would send it to you for your signature, but I'm still learning how to use this.
I don't know how to use it either.
Well, it beats the heck out of the Digristal app that I've used over the number of years I've been with the cities.
Top Pro.
Top Pro. No, Poly Express. Okay, so, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal cooperative agreement between PRPC and Potter County for the use of electronic warrant transaction program, PUES.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, number seven, Crenwatt, recognize Crenwatt's process of purchasing right-of-way for project called Crenwatt Two. It is a new fifty-four inch groundwater transmission line that will run from their well field in Roberts County to our Emerald Regimen High support at northeast twenty-fourth and the Fitch Highway. Battle design is scheduled to begin in twenty-twenty, with project completion two or three years later. Mr. Siderwatt, how are you?
Good. I appreciate y'all taking the time to do this, and I'll be brief, this is just kind of courtesy. Brief history, our original groundwater line was, was designed to enhance the quality of lake merit, because lake merits were dropping, salts were bad, when we were supplying as much water as we thought, we built an original line, came online in two thousand and one. Lakes started dropping, we started buying water rights. Two thousand and six, we had more water rights than any other entity in the nation. Then we expanded that well field, prices came down, we had some extra money, then we bought Pickens and Rife, which doubled what we had, we already had, you know, more than anybody else, now we have double. The lakes continued to drop, we had money left over from that expansion, so now we're looking at what we'll call Crenwatt Two. It'll, it'll double the groundwater capacity, it'll fill up the original lake water system, it'll keep us all whole, even if the lake isn't available. What we're doing right now is we're, we're going to start buying right-of-way for this project from, from Roberts County to the Emerald Regimen High support about the President at twenty-fourth and the Fitch Highway. That way, when we start designing twenty-twenty, we'll just hit the ground running, the right-of-way purchase, and it's a time consuming part of the process and so. That's what we're doing here today. We'll, this is just kind of a courtesy, we're going to send out offer letters to the landowners, this is to Potter County, Potter, I don't know if you can see that one, but I can leave this with the, anyway, just be glad to try to answer any questions. We're just, we're just getting ready to start that process. We won't start construction until the company signs for twenty-twenty, hope to be online two or three years after that.
Do you have any questions?
Most of your wellfields in Roberts County are burning.
Actually, currently, all of it is. We have rights in Gray and Lillan Hutchinson and Simon Carson and been around, but all of it is centered in Roberts County right now. When this line, this, this line will go, the original line's here, this line will come into the same location, we'll share that well field, we'll expand it, we'll probably add twenty or thirty wells at two million dollars each. It's about a two hundred and fifty million dollar project. That's how we're waiting for twenty-twenty until summer, if it falls off.
And the idea around the initiative is just to maintain the, the water level, and it's, plus, you're planning strategically for the future, I'm hearing you're doubling your current capacity?
That's correct. Basically, right now, we're, we're only able to supply half what the original system was, was designed to do in the sixties, because the lakes aren't available.
Sure.
So, so with this second pipeline, the two of them combined will be the same as what the original lake water system was, so we'll make all the cities whole on what the original project will keep the system full, even if the lake isn't available. I've done the math on our, on our wellfields in Roberts County, our water holdings, if, if the lake never comes back, which we know is not true, if the cities never do any water conservation over the next century, and if the Chamber of Commerce grows and our member city, we have, we won't start bumping against groundwater district pools for a hundred and thirty years. All those things will, you know, none of those things are realistic.
Sure.
Well, maybe Chamber of Commerce grows, but sure that we're going to have water conservation and, and surely the water is a platform, and we're in pretty good shape for that.
You should know this, but I feel a little bigger about it. What are the cities that are involved?
Pampa, Borger, Emerald, Plainview, Lubbock, Slaton, O'Donnell, Tahoe, La Mesa, Level Land and Ground. If that was eleven, I'd do it all.
Are you good? I couldn't love it. All right.
Okay, this is to recognize all the resources.
So, I'm going to have water the rest of my life, is that what you said?
I made your statement.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, number nine, resolution victim assistance program to consider an act upon the rights of Judge Tanner to execute application for federal assistance to be submitted to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division for the continuation of the victim assistance program.
Kelly, good morning, all this. I think we're going to overview the amount of money that we're going to be applying for this time, which I'm so excited about, because the ten years I've been doing this, it's going to only have capped forty-five thousand. The governor's office sent out notices that there's no cap this time, so our office decided to take advantage of it and include our third victim assistance coordinator, which is all three of us now in this program. So, hopefully, if, if we can get this approved, it's going to save Potter County a lot of money this next fiscal year, fifteen, sixteen. That's my goal, is to work on it really hard and try and convince them that's what we need to do. We service over three thousand victims a year, and I just feel like that we have a good shot at getting this done, so hopefully.
Good. And hats off to you guys for what you do. And Jen, you can pay, that's all.
Yeah, very impressive to recognize the no cap and really go after it. I think this will be exciting, and please give us a minute, should that happen.
Oh, I will, definitely, and we have about twelve to fifteen other agencies that are competing for this also, but the state has made it known that we have a lot of money to spend, and all of us are going to take advantage of it.
Good. Good, so let me have a motion on this, please.
I move that we authorize Judge Tanner to execute an application for federal assistance to be submitted to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division for the continuation of the victim assistance program.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. I'll give you the time to see the other two. Okay. Number ten, recommendation to purchase live scan device, to consider an act upon a recommendation from the local advisory board that the county purchase a fingerprint capture device commonly referred to as live scan device to replace the obsolete device. How many times can you say device in the same sentence? Located in the Potter County courthouse. Chief Johnson or Wade Ostracek, who wants to speak?
I'll start, I can carry the water, I'll work across the line. When the local advisory board last met, Sheriff's Department asked that we put this item on the agenda, and, you know, I'll quickly get lost here, more by the way, as a Commissioner. Over here in the security office in courthouse close to your office, there's a, there's a fingerprint capture device, and my understanding is from Chief Johnson and Captain Dawson is that it's, I use the term obsolete, and after we got that one adjusted, Chief Johnson corrected me, it will still work, but it doesn't, it doesn't work for the purpose for which it's intended. DPS is informed, the SO, the Thanean new device, is my, also my understanding, that this particular machine operates on XP, which is an operating system that Microsoft no longer supports, and I believe this is for non-custodial arrests here at courthouse, that correct?
Right. Ghost booking, ghost books, so basically, one person is here at the, at the courthouse instead of sending them out to the jail or taking them out to the jail, they are ghost booked here where they pay their fine and get booked in, booked out, basically, without having to go to jail. And it's also for, Randall County has people in custody when they come to the District Courts Building to get booked in or to plead on their case, and we have never actually arrested them. They go down and they can be, or they come over here and they can be fingerprinted and sent, or, you know, their charge sent to DPS and the FBI, and therefore, it starts the process quicker, the, once they're fingerprinted, which this machine here, the, we just found out like two months ago, DPS said, well, that machine has not sent it to, to the, to the, you know, to the FBI. It just basically, and it won't even send it to the, to the taxes, except that it already has a, the person already has a fingerprint in the system, because it's just a fingerprint, like a little deal there that you just do the full fingerprint on it, on the card, whatever. It's kind of, it's kind of a, a long, drawn-out thing, but what it does is it basically helps the process of a person being booked into the, to our facility go quicker for the clerk's office, for the DA's office, for the county attorney's office. In other words, it'll show up in their system quicker. If you do it the other way, you fingerprint them on a card by hand, you have to take that card, take it over to the sheriff's office, they have to do their stuff to it, and then mail it to them. So, like I said, it's, it's, does it quicker, you know, an officer goes out there on the street and stops somebody, it's going to be in the system, this person was booked in on this charge, where if they're mailing it, it could take, I don't know, a month or six weeks to do it. It's not just, and that's why I took it before that advisory board, is because it's not just really us that are using this, it's basically the district clerks, the county clerk, the district attorney's office, the county attorney's office. They get that information quicker, so, and like I said, DPS, about two months ago, we talked to them on the phone, trying to figure out the process, and they said, we're not even supposed to be using that machine, that machine's a court machine. So, it's supposed to be placed in the courtrooms, so that when somebody, I guess, gets sentenced or whatever, they can do their little one fingerprint for that charge, and basically, that's what that machine is. So, we had to actually change the number, once, when we were doing it here, we were changing the number to make it fit, and it wouldn't be important unless that person had already been in the system. They were only accepting it if that person had already been in the system, so it was kind of, we weren't using it for what its function was. So, DPS said, to do that, you have to buy another machine, and they purchased the one out there at the correction center, and it's a pretty costly machine, like, I don't know, forty thousand dollars for the one out there at the correction center, and they furnished that and another computer, which is called a DDG, which I'm going to, it basically houses the information that's, when you look in somebody, it has that information until you go to the machine to pull it up, do the fingerprint. So, they, they furnished that one and the DDG out there at the correction center, and they paid for the maintenance of it, and they will not replace the DDG machine, because it has the Windows XP on it, and this machine here, I think, is XP, which this machine was working, right? So, they said we had to purchase another one, and they also suggested that we purchase the DDGs, the updated DDG machine, which is out there for sale, in order for two live scan machines to connect to that DDG, to send it to DPS and the national. So, saying all that, is there any questions, anything? Clear as mud?
So, Chief, I, I feel like I have a naive question, but I'm just going to ask it. So, the current setup, because this is replacing technology that we currently have in-house, how are we not aware that it was not feeding to where we expected it to feed to? Like, it sounds like that was a surprise through this process, that we realized it wasn't being sent to the other divisions?
Evidently, like I said, if, if you already had a fingerprint in there, in the system, it was reporting to it, but again, the district attorney's office, they were actually, I guess, getting some numbers, and it was coming back wrong, and, you know, we even talked about it, and it's just, it wasn't meant for that, but we were using it anyway, but DPS said, that's a court machine, it's not a sheriff's office type machine that reports these charges to. So, don't ask me why, I mean, we've been using it, and I guess those cases that did were supposed to be reported to, the FBI were not being reported to.
And there's no backup? I, I, what's the cost for this, or a projected budget item?
Yeah, we don't have an official quote from the company yet, we just have a phone quote, and so I haven't had a chance to read out the actual cost, but the, the initial quote was around twenty-nine thousand five hundred for the whole setup, and then about five thousand dollars a year maintenance, so, but again, I haven't read it that out, and, and it's off of a federal contract we've been buying, so, if, I, I think the thought was, if y'all could approve it not to exceed thirty, we'd try to get another one of them through.
And just that quote include the D?
DDG, yes.
DDG. DDG. Okay. Um, and where are projected budget, because this is currently unbudgeted, I'm, I'm guessing. I'm sure, where would this come from? Chief, for sure.
We, it's, let's, to be determined, because we haven't ever, we don't pay for it now. You know, it's, it's, DPS is what's paid for it, for the, to the correction center. They pay for the machine, they pay for the old DDG, they pay for the maintenance on it. However, now, if this is what, well, you know, that's why I took it to the, that advisory board. Everybody that's, you know, in agreement saying, yeah, we want it because it reports to us and it helps our job easier. Uh, so it's gonna be, it's, it's not just the sheriff's office, it's a ninety percent, you know, correct, correctness, you know, we're sending stuff in and it helps with our, our uh, nice completeness of the that we need to fall under. So, there is no budget for it.
That, that would fit the meeting, obviously it's not for the board to decide, it was only just suggested. And you won't have to meet, but that contingency, that part we talked about, where we thought it might come from.
Might be better to bring this thing back with all the figures and where the money's gonna come from.
Because that won't stop you going through your vetting process, is that right? Do you? Yeah, that could. Or even if the departments that will be participating or see this as a good initiative, they wanted to give some of their line item from that, I mean, it's not a cost of purchase, thirty thousand, but every department wanted to kind of pitch in for the initial purchase. Everybody benefits from that, that might be another potential solution. Is that a contingency? I would, I would agree with that, I think it's a good suggestion.
Isn't, and basically what you're, you're referring is it will be shared, you're referring it to formality.
Is that correct? Chief, will be shared? The, the, the process is shared across departments?
Yeah, we start the process and then everybody else basically benefits from the, the process.
I don't think it's something we wanna do, it's something that we're required to do. We were required to get this stuff so that we can get it reported in a non-essential. So it's not like it's just something we're.
When did you know that it's not, it is no longer working? Do they shut it down?
It's been about two months and we were trying to figure out, we're trying to get a quote, see how much it was to get a machine, if we could even have two machines to the same. So.
So there's no way anybody could have budgeted for it?
No.
When we first got these machines, uh, there was an instance of a high-profile person in town. They've gotten a DFWI that was not arrested. And when we were doing the tracking of the disposition, we realized it wasn't in the system. So that's when we got all the court systems. And they were supposed to be used in court, well, I don't know why that didn't happen a lot. I think if the county courts at law, it happened, but I think it kind of went away in the district court. But it is very important that you get these people, that they don't fall through the system.
Yeah, I wouldn't agree, I wouldn't disagree with that.
Yeah, and then, and plus it's a cost, a cost saving, if they wanted to go out to the jail, you know, get booked in, that's
Right.
Really good thing.
I mean, now like this is a warrant, round up in the, in the county attorney's office and if somebody comes in, you know, they say, okay, well, go out to the they're not booking them, they're just saying, oh, it's a drunkard at the jail, get fingerprinted and you come back and if they don't, what, the jail's never gonna know that, you know, that they need to go out there, so.
So I think it's uh, it's pretty sort of real that they need the system, which we're going to give it, it's just a matter of hanging up where it's come from. So, what is your recommendation as far as the uh, source for those funds will be?
See, I know, you know, rights to use that, but it is a certified project.
Can you, can you consider this a emergent purchase, even though we've not necessarily classified contingency as that, often when we kind of dip into those funds, it somehow gets slotted in an informal way from that perspective?
I would say so, yes.
It's gonna be about, probably about five thousand dollars, not over five thousand, but about five thousand per maintenance, per, per year. Because like I said, DPS is paying for the maintenance right now, all the maintenance, everything, but once we replace that DDG with a Potter County purchased computer, then would they no longer will uh pay that maintenance fee on that?
There won't be, there won't be that fee this year.
No, well, no.
That'll be the next budget year.
It's included in that uh price.
That first price. We'll take care of the first year.
Okay, so can we go ahead and do this now, is there a waiting?
I move that county purchase a fingerprint capture device, commonly referred to as live scan, to replace the obsolete device located in Potter County courthouse using contingency funds. Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand, please.
Can we add limited thirty thousand? Would that be all right?
And I, I would ask, um, where would the future budgeted funds for the maintenance go out of the courthouse, find into that? Or how would that?
Start next year.
So that will just be budgeted out at the next time?
Right.
For now, okay. Until they no longer support another computer.
Are we kind of?
Are we? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Are you ready to say after the next one?
I'll remember.
I am, I am, okay. Appointment of election administrator as contracting agent. To consider an act upon the appointment of Melinda Huntley, Potter County Elections Administrator, as the county's contracting agent pursuant to section two-six-two point zero-zero-one-eighty-three of the Texas Local Government Code for the purpose of leasing the county's voting equipment to local political subdivisions participating in future elections as required by section one-two-three-point-zero-three-two of the Texas Election Code.
Any questions? Can we actually, uh, DCs for fun, for money?
In the past, we have not, but allow, the law allows us to charge up to ten percent of the original purchase price of our election equipment to political subdivisions that were running the elections for. And I believe in the past we have, and we've received all this equipment from Haba and just Potter County's good grace, we were using it for other political subdivisions. We're actually allowed to charge about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per iVote. And with the equipment aging, we definitely need to be putting our pennies away for the definitely that we will be having to replace it at some point, so that's why this is on, it has come up. So if I give this, seeing as school selection, what we have in the bank, we would anticipate using about one hundred iV tronics, so this would represent about two, maybe about a thousand dollars. That would go in our piggy bank for future.
And are those local subdivisions expecting that dollar amount, prepping for that in their budget?
Yes, yes. And so we, we, uh, that with them, we let them know that this has come up. Um, Randall County has done the same thing. Um, in the past, they have been not charging for their equipment, so um, this is what's kind of a a trend that all the counties are going to, is they're exercising this ability.
Um, Melinda, help me, because I may have this incorrect, for the Randall County voting equipment purchase, didn't the city help kind of pitch in for those purchases for Randall County?
Yes, the city and AISD assisted in the purchase of some of their voting equipment.
Could that not mean the case for Potter County, we use these Haba funds, if I'm following?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I just think we are charging.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Melinda Huntley, Potter County Elections Administrator as the county's contracting agent for the purpose of leasing the county voting equipment to local political subdivisions participating in future elections.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hands, please.
That's just fine, zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Potter Randall appraisal district board vacancy, to consider an act upon taking action to fill a vacancy on the board of directors of the appraisal district. Does anybody?
No. This is, you're a sort of a placekeeper, so you guys won't forget.
Okay.
I have nothing to say, I have no, no.
Here, here. I got the list from Julie Friday of the, the one that y'all voted on in twenty thirteen. Put two, two board members on there, Gilbert Guzman and Cindy Stenow. Okay. There were other people on here. One of them is the deceased person that we did not put on there for some reason. So I, I looked at them. I picked Lenny Sadler just because I know he does ditch which and I called him, he's already on the board. So, I don't know, I'm at a loss for, does anybody have any ideas? Do you have any clues at all?
Initial recommendation is what we're supposed to have.
And it's only, yeah, I mean, but he said he's already on it, so.
Well, those were names that came back from Pratt and we were to vote for one or split up our vote like we did. And other entities also got to vote, so.
Okay.
But how many of those are currently?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know who's on there, does anybody know who's, who's on the Pratt board?
Lenny's on there and Cindy's on there.
And Gilbert, Gilbert Guzman. And then Jack McCullough, but he's, he's deceased. So uh, is Rusty Roush?
No, he's not on there, but he didn't want to be considered as.
He doesn't. What about David Galloway? You know, David Galloway?
So how many slots are we looking at as far as?
We just need one, just to fill out this year. And the expired term for Mr. Hook.
Do we know when they need and how often and what the board requirements are yet?
I think they need it once a year. Why do you have four times a year?
Okay. It was almost once a year.
Right. I was almost right.
Anybody in the room interested?
Tom. Do you live in Potter County?
No, excuse me, you asked, I think.
I don't, okay. All right, so uh, let's table that one more time and I implore you to find someone, please. Go door to door. We'll pass that to next one.
Yeah, I think if we can just get some firm parameters about how often they need and maybe what time of day, um, then I think it would help seek out candidates, because that would be their first question, is what's the time commitment? And we wanna make sure that they can.
Okay. Uh, number thirteen, equipment repair replacement, and this is all, I'm assuming, for facilities maintenance, correct?
Yep.
Happy birthday, yesterday.
Thank you.
Yes, happy.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask you how old you're?
Play golf?
Do you play?
Very happy birthday. Yes, it was a good day.
Uh, do consider, consider an act upon replacing the following equipment, using the equipment repair replacement account. All equipment is beyond repair and will be turned into the sale of auction. So we have a DeWalt pressure washer from Home Depot, the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Tora Walk Behind Snow Thrower, the amount of seventeen-hundred dollars. A snow blower attachment for riding lawn mower, the amount of two thousand.
And all of these items were budgeted, is that, none of them were?
No, no, these, these items are, are, we currently own them, they are beyond repairs, so now we're here trying to replace them.
Okay. So is there a reason they weren't included in the budget this past year?
They were working properly.
Okay.
That's a repair replacement account, right?
Yeah, so the repair and replacement account, Carrie, that's listed, um, if you'll help guide me, is this the kind of global county one and not the one specific to facilities maintenance?
Right.
We still have a lot of year left.
Yes.
And Mike, there are no funds in your current?
We, uh, yeah, we have funds to cover, to cover the pressure washer throughout our small tools account. Uh, the grounds maintenance account, we've not really used a whole lot. We've budgeted last year to, to get us mostly through the big portions of the big purchase items, so. I mean, we, we definitely have funds in our grounds maintenance account and our tool account to cover the, the cost of these.
And we have a lot of jurisdiction.
Yeah.
We're just, be the best we can.
Somewhere to ask questions, we're, we're looking at these funds, so.
There are questions for the global, even the care and placement.
If, if that is a, if, if that is a, a, you know, a great concern, we could certainly uh, ask for, for an item C at, at the end of the budget. It would just have to be understood that, that the sidewalks and on, on the further streets away from the entrances probably aren't gonna get done, because you know, right now we're doing it all by hand.
Yeah, and I wouldn't suggest compromising the property at all. I'm, I'm just thinking through, uh, for me, it's a very frustrating feeling when these items are not budgeted and then it just really kind of gets dumped back on the court of, we don't know where any money is and let's figure it out in these kind of emergency funds, and I'm just, I'm nervous about us getting in that habit. And not saying these things don't come up and they don't happen, um, but when there's just two agenda items, like just today, I think it just speaks a little bit to the process. That's my only concern.
Those things are, at the time, probably, when periods, if they were operating properly, we're hoping to get through another year before, but it's like, so it just happened that, that they broke down, which is, it is really. Uh, I move that we uh, uh, replace the following equipment, using the equipment repair global. Replace the count. Our equipment is beyond, beyond, will be turned into sold off. These are the items, so it's good. Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, equipment purchase to consider an act upon purchasing a Dell equal logic server in the amount of forty-nine thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents from Dell Marketing, utilizing DIR contract number DIR dash SDD nineteen fifty-one, funds to be used from recently approved state grant.
I'll have that too.
Morning.
Morning.
Did I buy a vowel?
Sure, there's all these emergency funds, wherever you like to take it.
Well, this is not covered by emergency funds. So uh, what this is, uh, this is gonna be, the purpose of this is for the district county attorneys, for our, and we're looking for sheriff's office to follow some of that video evidence that we have coming in. Uh, this is one half of what we're going to be buying, uh, that we're gonna be needing. We're gonna go ahead and, like, what, first, this first half, because we use these grant funds. This is actually fifty thousand dollars. Three questions.
Um, Jason, just a quick question, this is in reference to the agenda item that Mr. Kill presented last core about these dollars that had to be spent kind of quickly, that there was an opportunity, these are those funds.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for being prompt and getting this back on the budget, or the agenda.
And when will you buy the other half?
Uh, that will be brought to you all as part of the court software.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve purchasing a Dell equal logic server in the amount of forty-nine thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents from Dell Marketing, utilizing DIR contract SDD nineteen fifty-one, funds to come from state grant.
Thanks, sir.
Motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thanks, Jason. You say something, okay. Equipment purchase to consider an act upon purchasing a radio tower and networking equipment from Tower Service Company in the amount of sixteen thousand eleven dollars and sixty for increased connectivity to the JP nine-three building. Funds to be used from the JP Technology Fund.
Yeah, uh, what we have out of JP three, uh, the connectivity, which, which, what that means is that when you click on something and open, let's say you open an email or you open a letter or do whatever your work is, uh, the speed at which that sort of thing happens is a thousand times faster than what it takes for people downtown. That's because of the old style of communication lines that we have in the court out there. And what this is, this, this will rectify that. And what we're doing basically is we're asking you to help us, to allow us to use the technology fund and purchase this so that we will own the equipment, there will, there'll be, there'll be no manual maintenance fee or anything like that on it. We will own this equipment outright. And uh, this is one of three, uh, it's, we got three different booths for different tower vendors uh around the area. This was by far the most expensive of those. By far, at least, what's, what's the difference? Just the. You know, we, we sat down and talked about that because we were a little wary with, with the quote, but, but checking references and comparing equipment, so I decided it's the exact same communication equipment model by model, so I, I, I guess just the, the labor rates being cheaper.
Carrie, how much is in the technology fund currently for the JPs?
About two thousand.
Twenty minutes. And is there a reason? And is there a reason we didn't go through, but this wasn't included? I sound like a broken record today, I don't mean to, but is there a reason we didn't get this out of the budget? We just learned a month ago that.
Well, no, our, what we've been trying to do is, is use, uh, lower end equipment that we can install ourselves in the IT department. That's what we've been able to do for the buildings downtown, uh, because they're short enough distance that we can, we can make equipment work out here. Uh, the reason that we could not, and we tried making that work to JP three. Uh, problem is between here and there, there's a lot of interference. BSA is riding to eleven, all the DOT traffic down I forty is all wireless, uh, road silence, sort of thing. And so, uh, what, what this project will include, the sixty thousand will include us by our own frequency from the FCC, so we might worry about that.
When you say it's a thousand times longer to receive the information, what is that in the actual time?
So, uh, let's say you, you clicked on a, a word document, let's say you open up a letter somebody sent you, uh, whereas downtown, you click on it, it's basically instantaneous, you click on it out there, you may wait a minute, two minutes, three minutes, just look it up. And the ideal is, you know, years ago, when, when all that equipment was put in place, the old communication lines, you know, the technology is thirty years old on the, uh, communication lines going out right now. And, uh, that, that was enough when the building is put in place. There's just more traffic going down right now than there was.
So the new five station is gonna have to happen to another talent. Say, who deal with them?
We'll see how they do on this.
That's right, we'll be the reference.
Okay, good, okay, good.
Um, Judge, just a quick question, because I know this fund, uh, really all the JPs use this, you're kind of sharing this, just to make sure they're all aware of this request. I think you guys just do that as a courtesy, since you share that fund, they're all aware of this.
Well, I haven't talked to them, but the majority of that fund comes from my court, so. Basically, this is two-fold. One is, they tried the antenna on top of our building. Two things come out of that. One was our top of our building wasn't enough to hold it. And number two, wasn't high enough to get out of the interference. So they really couldn't get the signal out of there, even though they could get by us. Change to that was go up higher. And so we had, we had a tower company look at it on the computer, calculated how high they had to get, get above everything, and this is what came out of. Second part of this is, this is gonna be really important in the new court management system software when that comes about because right now what we have doesn't have the bandwidth to support it. So, that's, then, that's the second part of this, and the, the other reason why this is needed. And, and the main reason that Carrie and I talked about using the IT fund to pay for it, so, and one, y'all didn't have to try to find the money for it, and number two, it is technology-based, so.
What's the physical location of the tower gonna be?
It'll be on the southwest corner of the building beside it.
Standalone?
Yeah, we'll have a, uh, concrete pad. Concrete pad, chain link fence around it, uh, anti-climb measures, I guess, put into it.
What's the lead time for something like that to be built?
Uh, we're guessing about, so.
Any more questions? The motion?
I move we allow the purchase of a radio tower and networking equipment, equipment from Tower Service Company in the amount of sixteen thousand seven dollars eighty-six cents. And that we use it just for the piece technology for it.
Have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number sixteen, insurance equipment purchase to consider an act upon purchasing the following equipment for Constable three as a result of the insurance loss. From partitioning the amount of six hundred and sixty-nine dollars ninety-five cents from calls and cop sync system and includes a camera system, computer and mounting hardware from cop sync in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars twenty-five cents.
This is for a replacement of equipment that was destroyed in the accident. Petition to the vehicle could not be, could not be removed because the vehicle impacted around them, uh, they were ride-offs. I was fortunate to be able to get a rear petition, uh, that was used, uh, it's coming out of service in the sheriff's office. Still need the petition, uh, cage, phone number assembly for, uh, that portion on the drive. And the other is for the cop sync system, which is a computer system that's inside the vehicle, uh, that, uh, a lot of that was destroyed in the accident. Mounts, uh, all of that were, were broken. And, uh, the, uh, camera system that was in there at the time of the accident was destroyed. So this is, uh, to get the cop sync system replaced, uh, and then the camera system replaced through cop sync, which is what was done for the other constables. I didn't do it at the time because I had, uh, an operating camera system that's gone down. And so this is, uh, a replacement of that system.
Okay, does the other party have insurance?
They do, and, and the reason we're putting this on there before we have money is, it, it looks like it might be a battle on the equipment. They've already reimbursed us for the vehicle, but equipment is always one of those things that we have to go back and forth with them. So, the, the constable identified these were the, the core items that he needed replaced currently to do his job. And so that's why we're going ahead and asking the paper now, and then any money we do recover, we'll go back to that insurance.
I really need to, so, I mean, it's, uh, the way I'm working now is, is not safe at all. I, uh, I have no radios, I have no emergency equipment, uh, I can't take anybody into custody, I can't run anything, can't run my systems. It's just not good, you know, I, I carry a portable, but that's only good about eighty percent of the time, precious time, I have no communication. And it really gets people.
Is this suggested account to insurance, um, is the insurance line item?
Any more questions? Have a motion?
I make a motion to allow purchasing of the equipment for Constable three as a result of insurance loss, uh, both item A and B as stated.
Oh, second. Uh, just a quick clarification, do we need to include the account in the motion, or are we good with that here? The insurance.
So noted that you attached the, uh, that the function be, uh, I'll be sure as well.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. I'm glad you're safe. Number seventeen, scope of work to consider an act upon improving the attached scope of work in order to obtain a proposal from Architectexis to continue project development for county buildings. Strategic planning committee. This is the, uh, in the scope of things, this is just, and planning stages alone is just on the table, nothing isn't done yet. This won't actually give me David, the purchasing agent, then you're going to need to go out and continue talking to Architectexis to finish what they started on the, their original proposal, which was the feasibility study. So we've got three projects, sheriff's administration, um, a mental health women's detention center, and also the district course building. We have three scopes here that we're talking about, and so we're just giving David today, you're going to need to go ahead and talk to Architectexis.
And really, the, the reason I wanted to bring it to the court is, is so that you were aware of the direction we're moving and that we had your, whether it's support or blessing, but so you were aware of the scope of the work, but I was getting proposals on and you were involved in that process. Uh, we will bring back, uh, proposal costs and everything for approval separately, but this is just initially to let me go out. This is kind of the direction I think that committee was looking to.
Is this included in the contract, the previous contract, or why are we not going to bid?
Yeah, it is. So in two thousand and twelve, when we did request for qualifications, um, for master planning and project development, a, a master contract was put in place with different phases as far as facility assessment, um, uh, programming, project development for, for the master plan for the county. And so because of that, that contract we did back then, this, this is an extension of that, and I'm getting into that original contract. There's three bases to that contract.
And what about the dollar amount? Is there any, if I remember correctly, there was, there was not, um, lots of dollars left on, on that line item for the architect fees, but I could be wrong.
Actually, with the new budget here, we have five hundred thousand set, set up, contract services.
Five hundred thousand for contract services. Um, just a couple of comments that I might add for the strategic planning committee. Um, if this truly will be a scope of work and strategic planning, I would suggest that we add, um, fire and rescue as part of that comprehensive master plan. Not saying we have to land anywhere, but I know that we have evaluated each one of those stations in the last couple of budget years. Um, and then I would also suggest adding just the Santa, Santa Fe property as a whole and what that future might be. And again, not that we have to have that as part of the feasibility study, but just so that we're thinking through all of the property, um, and that strategic direction. And I'm, I'm hoping as a part of this that Architectexis will hopefully partner with, um, someone that gives us some financial tools because I really felt like, me personally, I felt like that lacked the first go-around. There were all these ideas and initiatives, but other than raising taxes, we, we didn't really discuss any co-op sharing by other counties that might be able to use some of these services. I don't know, just, I, I would really like to see us at where we land at the end, that we have a financial impact of how this could happen. And I think we have paid them close to a million currently, so.
We, we, we paid them.
To bring us up to where we are today, is that correct, Carrie? Close to a million?
There's a, I don't know if this is a time for input or what, for questions on any of this scope of work. I guess my concern is if, if the amount of the women's pod or whatever it's called, will that mean then we'll have to have two different kitchens, two different, uh, infirmary or health facility, all of that, so like it's an extra expense.
It's all in the.
We could put the pods together out there in that other jail.
It's a consideration, but, uh, not in my plans, I am.
But it's gotta be, it's gotta be a campaign.
Well, and I think part of this, and currently if I'm wrong, David, is that if we do go through a true feasibility, um, and so that we can land with some of those detailed specifics of what that is and what's the best efficiencies and the cost and that kind of thing. Okay, I'm gonna make sure that we were.
That's what we're asking, I think, is, is considering. But, uh, but, but the commissioners are sitting on it, 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 it.
Like you, I don't know if this is the time to voice that concern, you know, this, thank you. I'm really not a favor of, of what I've been told as part of the female part of it. Um, the whole concept of moving the admin colleagues out there is to get us all close together. Um, you are correct, if they do a female unit back downtown or out there moving property is one of the things I've heard. How early are you increasing, I mean, you gotta increase it. You gotta double every kind of capacity you have that's out there. Plus, you have to realize, I mean, employee-wise, I mean, for everyone, you gotta have five. And that's pretty much the breakdown of our employees because of the shit. There's an old female unit out there that can be tore down and re, re-triggered, I think, and would house, uh, almost a hundred and forty-five people in there. So I think the possibility of putting it out there would still work. And again, like I said, I mean, I'm just, just boys in that group, sorry, and I know this is way earlier than that change. You know, then we go back into, uh, the transportation thing that we're trying to get rid of. We are still going to have the transportation to court and those kind of things. I, 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 I will say that there's, there's been talk also as, uh, maybe doing an intake unit downtown, which would be, uh, normal as well. But there again, if you do that within the female unit, you're gonna have to have a different, uh, okay, or divided places there for male and female as well. Just, just some thoughts. I mean, I really want to talk to people for one, about that, because in my opinion, I mean, you're, you're working a lot of money. I don't know what we've spent on our kitchen equipment out there, you know, those kind of things, the contract will go up because now we're gonna have to attach three, we've got three people on staff out there at the Dell, we're gonna have to staff that as well. Just, just things to think.
I, I.
And I know that you're too, I do, I do.
I know, I want to know.
But what I would say, uh, and I, I keep looking to David because I know that you're gonna work through that and kind of get this framework down. I would expect probably where we land is that they're not giving, they would be proposing some efficiency gain with this transfer. I wouldn't imagine that a recommendation would come back and say, spend double what you do today. I, I think, for my own opinion, Potter County has very different demographic challenges. I mean, that is the reality, and I think there's, it goes without saying, this plan is progressive, aggressive. But the statistics that I see on my, and I definitely don't see it on the criminal side as you do in that detail, we've gotta do something. We can't keep operating the way that we do today for the next thirty years. That's not what's happening from any, I mean, you know that, you live and breathe that, so.
And we're working towards that, especially on the mental health part of it. We're in talks right now with, you guys approved a budget for psychiatrists. We're in talks with one right now. It's only two hours a week that's only going to go forward, uh, but we're still talking, so we don't know whether that's gonna come to fruition in a while at this point. We do understand that there is a mental health issue, you're right. I mean, our democrat, demographics are different than on the other side of the twenty-sixth street, uh, we all know that. So that is things that we're still looking at and trying to, to improve. And I'm not opposed, like I said, I'm not opposed to what she's, what, what has been, uh, proposed. I'm just, I hope, I hope it's weird to, I guess, my, my concern. Just because I know the expense of what we're gonna have to do to get two places for it. Because you're, you're basically, I separate, uh, for the females. And that's, I mean, you gotta have all your housing or your medical and your laundry and your, uh, food service all in one. To me, that's, that's where I'm pretty concerned.
Yeah, and I, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that. I would just say that, I, in my own opinion, I feel like it is very, very progressive. But I do think Potter County is positioned in the top twenty-six counties to maybe do something that we've never done before. And so I, what I think Architectexis has differently than they had this three years ago, um, you know, they came to the table and said, let us dream big, and let, and so we got to dream big and the dollars that went with that. There is some framework and some direction, so I do think, hopefully, the second cycle or the third cycle of the recommendation will be something tangible. So I mean, I, I applaud the committee for at least thinking through what we do today and what that future is. Thank you, Sharon.
What are the figures that we?
Just real quick, we've gone through, that's like about eight hundred and sixty thousand.
That we currently pay.
Okay, we have a motion to allow David to do his job. Yes, have a motion, wait a second.
What are we, what are we moving?
We're, we're giving him the authority to talk to Architectexis further to do.
Yeah, and if you just.
We've not approved in this scope of work.
No.
Well, this is the scope of work I will present to them to, to give us a, a dollar figure to go with this board, so, um, you're, you're not necessarily approving.
Oh, really? Not technically, you're on it.
This is a battle of, uh, this is ongoing conversation. I guess it's, it was more informational of, of this is where we're going and, and, yeah, you can approve me to go ahead and give proposals for, for Architectexis.
Okay, I'll second that. Have a motion in second, short and he is.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Sure.
So the motion is, uh, Mr. Kelly said so move and so it's just to, to give David, her, the first senior, the authority to get proposals from Architectex, is that sufficient?
Okay, thank you. Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Propose? Okay, Party Camp Projects, we're report on Party Camp Projects.
Good morning. The report that I've given you, uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions. There's only two updates that need to be made to that report. The area rugs on there, we need to bring it up around eighty percent. I have given each one of you a timetable, master timetable on these, whatever modernization. We, uh, have our pre-con meeting on it this coming Wednesday. By the time we actually have equipment hits that, uh, we're expecting around July of this year. And we're anticipating a year and four months. Bomb project, if this company has done all of our other live projects, we feel that the timetable will be digital. Shorty.
I think we stand on the, the middle work for this.
Dave? Sorry. Judge Cameron's asking where we stand on the middle work on our empty items.
It's, it's part of the lawsuit.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, we, uh, at one point, we were there to start, start it up again, and they kind of backed off. And so right now, there's, there's still a lawsuit pending on that. And I think that.
Sorry, I forgot.
That's all right.
That's right.
That's all right. The, the stats of that is there was a, there was a ruling about whether the parties that were already in the lawsuit, they were going to arbitration again. That was appealed and reversed, and that was back before the first year, got a mandate back for appeal, saying the gas was reversed, so I don't, I don't know what actually is going on. I assume the parties would be going back to arbitration unless somebody feels that ruling of Texas Supreme Court, I have heard that's again. So all of those items on that first, I, you got there, we're asking you to.
I, I'm the flooring at the extension, I was just, is that completed? Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, just no issue. I'm getting update on that six-three property, the water, last we had it, it was, we were drying it out, there were fans out there.
Drying it out.
The fans are still going.
Yeah, yeah, everything is dry, we're good, we just got a lot of cleanup to do. Find good weather and plenty of able bags.
When does that evaluation period close?
This one, if, of this one.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Ma'am.
We're not doing employment items to consider and act upon the following employment items, all in the road rage department. Transfer of Sebastian as replacement for Roger. Transfer of Don Rebus as replacement for Sebastian, and transfer of Eddie to replace Donnie, and the transfer of Aunt Madore to replace Eddie. Do I have a motion, or do you want to discuss this first?
If you have any questions.
Good morning.
Um, I just have a quick question, I'm looking through the backup on your, uh, we didn't move any dollars from any of the positions, they all stayed, and it's a, it's just a question, if they all, the salary stayed the same.
They, if they moved up, like, uh, Don grabbed, he moved into my position, his former position wasn't paying as much.
So he got the dollars and win with that position?
Yeah, we're in that position. Everything that was in there is budgeted.
Okay.
There's nothing extra.
So you didn't take any money from Donnie's and switch it over, none of that, it's all, okay.
Are you saying that they moved into that entry levels of that position or your current salary and when you deployed?
He moved into my current salary, not the part of that position. Because of his responsibility, things created, he is the second.
And then the others that were shifted, because I do think that's a good clarification, Commissioner, uh, if they move to the top tier of that salary or some entry level or minimum?
Uh, no, they moved to the top tier of that position. All of, all I was trying to do is establish some kind of chain in the business. That way, they know if they get promoted or moved up, they'll get that position, they'll get that one. That way, that's what I'm working for. I know and I understand that y'all were concerned about, uh, opening these positions to the public or whoever. But I, I chose these people because of their responsibility, their knowledge, their longevity on the job, and it's always good if they're always in, that way people below know that they can move up. Because you can interview somebody from outside, you never know what you're going to get, they might be a good interviewer, but they can tell you they're crazy, they're crazy.
I moved with, if, 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 uh, items. As per.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Thank you, Sebastian. Number twenty-six, that was a session, we don't have any need for that today, I don't think. Joe report is, uh, five hundred and twelve today. Just had a crazy weekend, ninety-seven females.
Yeah.
It's, they had to be the weather. And we're thinking of moving some of those maybe to shoulders.
Well, I have to, of course, they have that.
Uh, any count, any further accounting transactions? We have agenda items for next time, we're just going to revisit the appraisal, appraisal board, so we can bring that back.
There's, there's one item that, uh, it's not an agenda item, but, uh, we don't often get calls of appreciation and praise, so I just wanted to share with, uh, Sebastian, uh, it seemed. And I received two calls from different citizens that, uh, were appreciative of how we removed the snow on the roads during our last snowstorm. And I just wanted to make sure everybody received that praise. It wasn't me, as you guys were.
There's nothing more, we are adjourned.